It's called meeting to order, special meeting.
The Tuscaraw County Board of Trustees, roll call, please, Jay.
Yes, Janet Vance.
Here.
Bobby.
Here.
Mike Ridley.
Here.
Bob Creamer.
Here.
Jay Reedson. Here. Okay, public comment on the agenda item, yes, sir?
Yes, I'm Mike Sherbenee, I am the chairman of the Township Planning Commission, and I have some comments on the agenda item that has to do with Planning Commission guidance. The first thing, there's a motion to submit the master plan to the Board of Trustees to review, comment, approve, rejection, or further directs the master plan will not be distributed until the Board of Trustees has obtained, and we have that in our bylaws, so that's no issue. We have no problem, we've done that in the past. In fact, in September when we updated the master plan of last year, 2021, for our food truck ordinance and the zoning for the sewers, we had it approved by the Board in September 2021 to be added to our 2012 master plan. The second item, ensure the results of Planning Commission survey are not released after the Planning Commission Chairman briefs the township board. I'm not qualified to do the survey. In fact, the survey came out as 171 pages of raw data that Mike Ridley has a copy of it, I have a copy, and Dawn. All you have to do is ask if you want a copy of it. I'm not going to go through it, because we have been advised by Denise Klein, that she suggested that we go through it and trim. So in the last week, we've had Dawn and Jane put together a presentation for a Thursday meeting with summaries and bar charts of what is in the survey. It does not include names, it does not include addresses of people who want things done, because we don't feel that's part of, you know, the master plan. We need some advice on who would do that, and Denise Klein is the expert in the surveys. She is going to review that with us in February with the other things we talked about, the, starting with some of the things that were put together, all the data that she's collected in February. We only pay for four of her appearances in the budget, so her first one is going to be in February, she'll review the master plan. But Thursday, we're going to have a review, and Mike Turris is going to be here from the township county to review with us, too. It's a summary, and it's going to be in a form that everybody can understand. I'll send you a copy of the master plan, or the survey, if you want it. Mike's got a copy, all I have to do is ask for survey. It's 171 pages of raw data, I have not looked at it, and I've had Jane and Dawn go through it and put it in a format, so Thursday, we can look at the summary. So Mike's got a copy, all I have to do is ask him. Okay, plus, the other problem is, I've been advised, I can't sit down with you guys to go through that, because it violates the FOIA Act and the Open Meeting Act, so I'm not going to do that. Denise Klein has suggested that we do what we're going to do Thursday, and look at the trends. So that's one thing that I will not be able to, you know, follow through with your request. The third item, or the motion that you want to do, is in accordance with the Board Administration and Policy Manual, submit the required capital improvement plan to the Board for priorit- excuse me, prioritization and approval no later than April 15th. We plan on doing that. In fact, we're going to add that to our ordinance 40. We're redoing the ordinance 40 Thursday, too, and Jay was in the meeting when we went through it the first time, he had no objections with the original one. Apparently, there's some things in there.
No, that's not true.
You sat down, and we asked you about it, Jay.
I made some suggestions, I didn't, I'd say I approved everything.
No, you didn't approve it, but you looked at it. But I'm saying is, okay, there's some things in there, apparently.
Don't put words in my mouth, Mike.
This is just public comment, you'll have time. Three minutes are up, let's move along.
All right.
Three minutes are up, let's move along.
I'm trying, hey, I'm trying to go through this, Bob. You know, you're not going to bully me like you have everybody else.
Let's stop, Mike. Settle down.
Come on, come at me.
Just settle down, everybody.
Point of order.
You're famous for personally attacking.
No, I'm not, I'm not attacking anybody.
You did it in August, now you're doing it, you got it. Now, three minutes are up.
You have the, I guaranteed you that the annual report would be there, I've guaranteed you that.
We need to move along. Three minutes are up, I'm not going to play with this.
The last two, Mike? I've ensured, Bob, I emailed, that the last two items are going to be taken care of.
Okay, that's fine, all I wanted to do was clarify. Jay, I apologize if I put words in your mouth, that was not what I, I just knew you were at the meeting and there, so.
We move along.
All right, I'm done.
Public comment. Okay, public comment is closed. Planning Commission guidance, you want to, Janet, did you prepare this?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
My first motion, let's talk about that. The Board of Trustees directs the Tuscaraw Township Planning Commission to, number one, submit the master plan to the Board of Trustees for review, comment, approval, or rejection, and further directs the master plan will not be distributed until approval by the Board of Trustees has obtained, and ensures the results of the Planning Commission survey are not released until after the Planning Commission Chairman briefs the township board. So.
Is that a motion?
Yes, that is my motion.
I second.
Do you have a second?
Discussion?
Yes, I want to explain. Whether or not these are in the bylaws of the Planning Commission or not, I think it needs to be as a direction of the township board and actually be a policy that we implement for future planning commissions, because bylaws can be changed, or ignored, or gone through, or whatever, depending on the people that's on the board. So therefore, I think it should be a township directive, that we know what we expect out of the Planning Commission, and so, and as far as Mr. Sherbenee's comment about he's not qualified to brief us, or it's against FOIA, or OMA, or whatever, I mean, they could send us their summary, they're, he admitted that they're doing a summary, he could send it to us, written form, or video form, or whatever they want, it doesn't have to be, but it could be a formal meeting if that's what he wants, and as long as it's open to the public, it would not violate OMA. So therefore, I stand by the motion, Heather.
Okay, more discussion? I think, number one, it's in there already, number two, I kind of agree with Mike, but I understand the reason to hold it back, because right now, it's foable, the raw data is foable, I've gotten, I've gotten all of this data from, we all have, and all of it's foable.
All we want is a summary of what they found from the, from the survey, it doesn't have to be anything big and formal, and as far as, number one, being in the bylaws, that's fine, but it's not in our policy to do that, and so therefore, that's what this is about.
I have a question. Is it, so the last regular meeting, there was some confusion, and people voted against getting the Planning Commission up to snuff, as far as the state law. So my thought was that there are certain members of the Board who are questioning if the Planning Commission exists properly, what we need to do with it. So why are we creating policies prior to having a township attorney, who I would assume is going to look at all of this and go, okay, this is what you need to do with your Planning Commission? Why would we create policies that, first of all, it is, I mean, they're, they're having a set of meetings, the state law outlines the meetings they have to have in order to do all of these things with the plan. So we're making a policy that kind of goes against state law, or does different things, we haven't had an attorney look at it, we're just kind of throwing policy out there, why wouldn't we wait until we have an attorney who looks at this and says, this is how your Planning Commission should look, this is, if we need a policy, or their bylaws should reflect this, and this is how it operates? We're, we're putting the cart before the horse to get control of a 10-year plan that I think we already have control of.
So Bobby, didn't we just hear that Mike said this is all part of their bylaws? This is all part of it?
Right, that's what I'm saying, so why?
So how can, how can we create policy that already exists? All this does is make the Board clearly direct the Planning Commission.
Does an attorney look at this and say, okay, this, state law this, bylaws this? We, I mean, I'm not an attorney, I don't know if I need a policy at this Board level that supersedes state law, or has a word that's different, we're, we're just creating policy to create policy, it looks like to me, and, and I don't know why we wouldn't do this in a more organized one.
I don't see how we are creating policy.
Okay, I'm just giving my opinion.
More discussion, more discussion. Roll call, Jay.
Janet?
Yes.
Mike?
No.
Bobby?
No.
Bob?
Yes.
Jay, yes.
Motion passed. The next, Jen, Janet?
All right, the second motion I have, is the Board of Trustees directs the Tuscaraw Township Planning Commission, in accordance with the Board Administration Policy Manual, Chapter 4.11, submit the required capital improvement plan to the Board for prioritization and approval no later than April 15th, two, submit the Planning Commission annual written report to the Board of Trustees no later than June 30th, 2023, and then each year thereafter, and number three, provide a progress report on all items to the Board of Trustees within the required monthly report. So all this does is put in the policy, we've already got it.
Is that a motion?
Yes, that's, I'm sorry.
I second.
Thank you. All this does is, well, number one, we have the policy that they're already doing, the CIP, we're just putting a date on it, so we can use that information when we're doing our budget discussions, because we're going to be into budget season, we have to have that submitted at a time where we can use that to help us plan. Number two, the annual written report, and I'm not sure if, if they've ever done a written report, or it was a verbal report, but I think it should be an annual written report, so it can be in the records, and, and do that before the annual meeting, and provide a progress report, since they're going to be required to do a monthly meeting, if they have a meeting that month, and I know they're not required every time to have a meeting, but if they have one, just give us an update of where they are with the required, requirement that's on the board. So that's, that's all that adds, just putting dates on stuff.
I understand, number one, and I think I heard Mike agree with that. Second, the annual written report, I don't know that we've ever done one, but we need to do that, and I've assured Board members, or Bob, that, that we're going to do that. And, and I want to know, too, are we going to do this with the DDA, are we going to do this with the Park Commission, are we going to do? Okay.
Depends on what's in their bylaws, right?
Yeah. The, it's, it's, my, I hope that we're going to do this consistently, or we're not just singling out the Planning Commission.
Oh, no, but this meeting was about the Planning Commission, so I put that in now.
I don't know what your DDA bylaws say. Well, it doesn't say anything about the, it does say an annual report. We, there's an annual report due from the DDA, but we're going to have that same motion from the Board for the DDA.
I think that's worth discussing, yeah.
The Planning Commission has no objections to any of that, I mean, well, no law.
Hold on, Mike.
I'm just saying.
I know.
We're fine.
I just want to make sure if we do this, this is, it's going to be consistent, that everybody, because I did mention to Bob also, that we just need to have a sit-down with every, every commission.
I think that, I think that would be worth, I think that would be worthwhile discussing, absolutely.
I don't think the Parks does, don't know that they need to. I think there's a five-year plan, we have a 10-year plan, I think, request. Okay, more discussion?
My question is, why, when did DDA want to do this?
It's not that they wouldn't want to, it's, we're going to be, we're going to be up the same standard for everybody, same policy. I mean, I can remind the DDA, does Park Commission have to have something, it may be in their bylaws as well, I'm not sure.
And I think the key thing here, too, is that there are dates here that, that have been proposed as part of these, where are already court agreements, it's just a matter of making sure that we meet those dates concurrently.
Okay, more discussion? Roll call, oops, I'm sorry.
Can I just ask one question? So you talk about, so is this a policy, the second motion? Somewhere I read a policy, is that a different motion? That this would become a policy?
I don't have a, it's just, the only thing that's in there is that the word policy, it mentions the Board Administration Policy Manual.
So this is just approving these dates? Not, it's not a set of policy?
Yes, 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 ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Because, because, that's a very good point, because in Chapter 4, we have a process, but we can't really dig into the process if we don't have that by that time. And then, the, the written report makes sense to me, because it's the end of the fiscal year.
Right, okay, so it's just dates, it's not a, right?
Yeah, because, because we'd be kind of going in the blind if we didn't have that, that CIP.
So along those lines, you know, I'm creating a schedule, January through December, for all the deliverables we have coming out of the clerk's office, and part of those deliverables will, well, in part, would be obviously the budget, and then this would go into that schedule, so, and we will have other things we'll put in that schedule to make sure they get done on time and they get done correctly.
Okay.
More discussion? Roll call, Jay.
Mike?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jay, yes.
I have an additional motion. I move that all ordinances and resolutions, both new and amended, be presented to the Board for discussion and require a majority vote in order to submit them to the township attorney for legal review.
Can you say that again?
I said, I move all ordinances and resolutions, both new and amended, be submitted to the Board for review and discussion, and require a majority vote in order to submit them to the township attorney for legal review.
That's your motion?
So it's, so the, like, the Planning Commission?
Well, listen, let's second it, so we can talk about it.
Okay, I'll second the motion.
Jason's second.
Jay's second, it, Mike's good. So instead of the Planning Commission, like, with their work on, on any ordinances, it has to go to the Board for approval before it goes to the attorney?
We send stuff to the lawyer when it.
As opposed, they don't, they do not go to the attorney?
That's correct. It comes to us, and if we concur, it goes right to the lawyer. And that, that, that makes sure we're all on the same page, and we don't have any misunderstandings.
Well, it also keeps costs of lawyer down, because we can, we can direct it. I like that idea.
So the resolution, to restate it, just to make sure I heard it correctly, is all ordinances and resolutions, new and or amended, be submitted to the Board prior to going to?
For approval.
For approval.
Prior to going, prior to going to the township attorney for legal review.
For legal review.
Just personally, I just see that it may hold things up, before always waiting for a, a meeting to, to prove it.
Well, we did it with Mike, and it worked very well, actually.
We did it with the Township of Excellence, too, we went through it all, made whatever recommendations we wanted before it went to legal.
It's just going to make for better coordination, better, better coordination, better teamwork, better understanding, no misunderstandings, and, yeah, it will save us on the legal bill. Because at the same time, think about this, you put all your questions down, if it's going to the lawyer, you've got a question, she's got a question, I got a question, it all goes.
But you're saying everyone else, too, we're, this Board's going to approve Planning Commission, Parks, DDA?
If it's an ordinance, if it's an ordinance.
Or a resolution.
Right, a major resolution.
What's a, what's a major resolution?
Well, a resolution is a resolution.
It's, yeah.
Well, there's five different types of resolutions, but, but the resolution to change a policy or make a law type of thing.
So if you, if you think that a resolution should go to the attorney, or someone else does, it should come here first.
And the commission, so you're saying we're taking the power of them governing themselves and putting it in?
If it's about an ordinance, or a resolution, that they're proposing that we bless, or institute?
Enact it.
Or fund. Or fund, that discussion should be here first, and then we go to the attorney.
So we can have our own input as well.
You know, we call them up, they go to the podium, make your case, go, we talk about it, it just seems to me that it's what we need to prevent misunderstandings, or, and excessive costs. And, and the, the January meeting was a perfect example. Any more discussion? Roll call, Jay?
Roll call, Janet?
Yes.
Bobby?
No.
Mike?
No.
Bob?
Yes.
Jay, yes.
Okay, motion passed.
Bobby had one more, Chapter 11.
So I move that we establish a new chapter to capture policy decisions made at book Board meetings, and it should contain the subject of policy and the date of enactment.
Can you kind of give me an example?
When we passed the bid policy, we put that in Chapter 4, and we put the date.
Okay.
Right, when we passed the federal grants guidance, we put that in Chapter 4, and the date. There may be some policies that don't fit in any of those chapters, but we would want to capture them, so I would propose that if something that we want in there, we talk about it, right, and then after the minutes are done, right, we put in the consent agenda a proposed line. So if we have policy that, I don't know, make up a policy, a new, a policy on?
A new credit card.
On a credit card, and it doesn't really fit in Chapter 4, maybe, then we, we have to have someplace to put it, capture it, and record it. And then at some point, you can always go through this new chapter, and try and move it into the proper pigeonhole, but I just don't want to.
11 is a catch-all, until we figure out?
Yes, intel.
Right, remember how we always have to go through all the minutes to find the policies that we passed three years ago? This will avoid that, but.
Wouldn't this also be like a change management tool?
Yeah.
So that when, besides something new?
Right.
We're changing existing policy, we would have a reference to what the policy was, what the policy is, it's going to, what the date is, and what the resolution or the, or the motion was by the Board to approve that policy. And then, obviously, we would update the manual to be the, the correct policy, not a lot of, this is what it was, this is what it is, no, that's all on the change management side over there, so it's recorded.
I mean, maybe.
There's evidence, there's, there's, I'll say a paper trail, but the policy remains, and you can footnote the policy, say, see, you know, item number three, and the change management for what may have been a change here, so.
So let's say we make the policy on the new sewer system, and it doesn't really go in Ordinance 28, we have a place to put it, we have a place to capture it, reference it, and it's going to always be there. It's just thought, we don't have to do it, but, but I like the idea of being able to have a, if we're going to have a policy, it's all in one place.
And, and it fits in the policy manual, and one thing I've been doing, too, is, is cleaning up some of the stuff in the office, and trying to figure out where it goes, we'll have minutes that reference a, a resolution, but the resolution's not necessarily attached to minutes, because it might be old, it got separated, or whatever, this way, we can keep track of stuff that affects our policies, and since we have a policy manual, it kind of makes sense that we put it in there, and that way, we're not adapting it every few months, or whatever, we can go like once a year and review it, and, and try to, you know, put it in, but it's just that we're not losing the stuff.
And I, I would want us to agree to the wording of that policy and the date, just like we did on bid policy, all this other kind of stuff. So it's not just, oh, okay, well, we decided on a new policy, we're going to put it in Chapter 11, no, that's, what I'm talking about is we agree that it, first of all, we agree that it goes in Chapter 11 to capture it, and we agree on the wording. I just don't want to lose it.
And at the same time, you could talk about separability as well. Does this policy have any conflict with any other policy, or is it a standalone, meaning every other policy without conflict stays the same?
Now, now, in some cases, it wouldn't go in Chapter 11, so we have the new city policy coming up on February 19th, if we don't get a stay from the Supreme Court, we're going to have to work on that, but that would go in Chapter 5, as in a, you know, as a position of paragraph. But let's say we didn't have a Chapter 5, we would probably want that to go into Chapter 11, right? So I don't expect it to happen very often, but I would like to.
But, but I'd like to see this Chapter 11 also be a change management record, that says, we, here's a change for agreed to, here's where it fits in the manual, here's where it doesn't, until such time as we do figure out how to move it from level to level. And then you can reference the minutes, you can reference the motion, you can reference any other dates, any other conflicts with any other policies, and then you have, I'll say, the best you can expect of a change.
And I don't think it'll happen very often. It's only if it doesn't fit somewhere. Motion, do we have second?
I think I seconded.
Okay, roll call, Jay.
Okay, roll call, Bobby?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Jay, yes.
Can I comment? Is it okay?
Yeah.
Okay. So if we want a policy in that Chapter 11, you know, we should just briefly talk about the steps. So I would suspect a, a Board member would propose that it go in Chapter 11, and then we talk about it, we agree on the language, and then we directly put it in, would that be okay?
Yeah, I think we should note, make sure that's written down, memorialize that, notarize that, because that, that should be part of the minutes, part of these minutes.
You got that?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
So in other words, we described the process, let's summarize it. The Board has to decide to put it in Chapter 11, we need to agree on the wording and the date. Is that acceptable?
Yep.
So that would be the procedure.
Do we need to vote on that, or just?
No.
Just, okay, just saying.
Unless you want to, I mean, it's not.
I think it's.
I think it's just kind of appropriate.
It's a, making sure that the previous motion was understood.
Okay, budget adjustments, Jay?
The only budget adjustments, the only thing I want to say about budget adjustments is that we need to get commitments on ARPA funds, because I'd like to, at the February 7th meeting, bring up the ARPA fund, and if we don't have commitments against the ARPA fund, commitments, meaning we have ideally a purchase order out there, job hasn't been done, but, you know, we know how much it's going to be, if it's within our, our budgeted amount, the $65,000 that we allocated as, or that the Board allocated out of ARPA.
So, so in other words, what do you call, FASHA?
Yeah, FASHA, the air conditioning here, there's been.
Well, we did the air conditioning, right, it was 19,000.
Thousands.
Thousand.
You talked about it, I don't know that I've seen a invoice.
Wasn't that part of ARPA?
Yeah, that was, air hammer, air hammer.
Air handler?
No, it's not.
We agreed to have M&amp;M do it, but it's just.
They had to order it.
Right, but that's, that was an ARPA item, correct?
And the other one is the AED, which they're just, they've got everything together, and they, they're just waiting on the unit itself.
So I'd like, I'd like to ask that we get, you know, the commitments on those dollars and timing and. dollars and timing and?
Now.
Then we'll know how much money is left and how to go down, what needs to happen with that money.
Mike and I put out an RFD for the FASIA, and he's been dealing with that, so we might have something by the February 7th meeting, right? Because I think it's the 31st is the deadline.
Is that when we put down 31st?
Did anybody else come besides Holden?
Frank never showed up. Holden never showed up.
I'll call him.
Yeah, he's going to come back during last week, but it was storming.
It did go into builder's exchange, I saw it.
Okay.
Any others?
That's all I have.
Okay. Public comments?
Yes, sir.
Just trying to get a point of clarifications on public comments on agenda items. Having filmed these meetings for more than 20 years, I have seen many times when the comments have been allowed to go more than three minutes with no objections from any board members. I understand the three-minute limit is to, like, right now, me talking, and that's been well-established, well-documented, but I don't recall that being documented on public comments. If it's going to be that way, it should be that way for everyone. Second, I would strongly recommend that the board consider, and I'm only saying this because this happened twice this month, but in anger management class, one of the board members, who can't seem to control his temper, he either storms out of the room or bangs a table and shouts back at people when they're talking, and that's going to cause the board some problem. Thank you.
Strong law.
Good morning. Supervisor made a comment, and I quote, having the same policies for everyone, and I assume you were referring to commissions, committees, things like that. That's not possible because they don't have the same authority, they don't have the same purpose. The DDA is tax, skim-funded, there's no issues with what's going on with them, there's no controversy. Park still needs research and discussion, planning needs more research and discussion. I hear terms like ad hoc, citizens' panel, advisory. There has been more distraction with Parks and planning in the recent couple of months than there's been in passing 10, now 11, chapters of a policy manual. It's an embarrassment. Knock it off. I think it's time that we absolutely insist that we have the new attorney once hired attend these meetings, and today is a perfect example. I think that it could be, and Bobby, I agree with you 100%. I think that that could save costs in the long run. I think that he could answer questions right here, right now, and then if things need further research, he'll go do the research. I would ask that we bring the newly hired assessor to a meeting and introduce him. I would ask that we continue to emphasize hiring and extend our hours. I'd like to congratulate Laura on her promotion. Well-deserved, from what I hear. All these boards and committees and commissions have a unified purpose, and that is to answer to the citizens. The general tone has been contradictory to that purpose. The infighting and power struggles, I'm just not aware of any citizens or groups that are asking for this, so knock it off.
Public comment?
Yes, sir.
First of all, I want to apologize to Mr. Kramer for my outburst. That's not, it wasn't called for, but plus, I'm going to take less than three minutes this time, too, but I want to clear up something that's been floating around there that the planning commission wants to have zoning. That may have been the process years ago. I may have mentioned that a few years ago when we were having issues with our county planning commission, and they were approving things that were not in our master plan, like in the village center ordinance or the village center overlay, they put things in there. So, I made comments back a few years ago that maybe we should have our own zoning. And then, also, there was been an item in the Ordinance 40 that stated that it was taken out of the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, which, if you read the Zoning Enabling Act, it says that in order to have established zoning in a township, you have to have a citizen's petition, and the board has to approve it. I just want to clear something up. I don't want zoning in this township. We have a great relationship, as Mr. Kramer has talked about, with the county. I just talked to Mike Tursk again this morning, and I was hoping that he would come today to reiterate the fact that we're an advisory board for zoning. We don't want to do zoning. We don't have the capability in our group to do it, and like Bob had said, you need an administrator, and Chris Kensvater can vouch for that because he was the head of zoning and planning in Bird Township. It takes a lot of money, a lot of time to do that. As long as we have a good working relationship with the county, I have no problem, or we don't have any problem with the way we're doing things today. So, I would hope that clears up something that I see floating around that the planning commission wants their own zoning. So, thank you.
Public comment? Public comment is closed, board comment?
I'll start. I appreciate it, Mike. I don't like surprises, and we can work together to avoid surprises, and I agree with 100% with what Mike just talked about. We're really lucky to have Mike Tursk. This guy is one of the best I've ever seen. I don't know how you feel about it.
Oh, I love him.
He keeps everybody straight, and I think if we just keep everybody abreast of what's going on, we're going to be fine, and we can stop all this pettiness. In regards to three minutes, the policy in Chapter 2 is clear. It's three minutes at the beginning, three minutes at the end. I'm not the moderator.
You ought to be.
When we talk about the CIP, it's, we don't want to make that hard. It's really, really easy. The county just has two categories. I think it's called needed and desirable, and with the planning commission doing the CIP for us, we have, in my view, we have more citizen involvement, and although we haven't given them specific guidance on how to present it, I would really like to ask the planning commission to actually rank them. So, in other words, if we have, I think the county calls it, what do they call it, needed and desirable, let the planning commission, because they're going to be coordinating with all these other bodies, tell us, okay, we recommend that under needed, this one go first, this one go second, this one go three, third, and make a recommendation to us. Because if you've got five, six, seven people working on it, and they're going to Parks, and they're going to police, and DDA, or, you know, whatever it is, that would be a big help to us. And we are going to have to have a public hearing, that's in the book, right? The board will have to have a public hearing on the submission, but at least we'll have something to hand out that citizens can see, we can post it on the web. I don't know what you think about that, but it's just a suggestion. Thank you.
Board a comment?
I have one, Mike. So, in the interest of transparency, I will, on February 7th, I think that's our next regular board meeting, provide a summary of a number of issues that we had to address and what the corrective action was, and there were successes that we were able to achieve, frankly, as a board. And then, I'll also be transparent on some of the personal issues I've had or errors I've had and what I've done to correct those as well. So, I will bring all that forward for February 7th with the help of Janet here as well, so.
Mike, I do have a public comment. This is strictly board policy, and it affects planning commission. And I'm glad that the bylaws coordinate with what the policy is, but now it's, like, written down for future boards, future planning commissions, it's all there, so everybody knows what's expected, and that's the only reason why we did this today, is to coordinate between your committee and us, so we all have the same expectations going forward. And I think it's a good step forward because as long as we understand where we all are, I think, I think we're going to go forward in a lot more positive way. So, thank you, Janet.
Bobby? Time for me. Okay, the votes, adjourned?
I may.
All right. Thank you for coming, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to say?